Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March, nope, it's not March, it's April, to the April 24th, 2023 regular board meeting. Roll call, please. Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mrs. Maya?
Here.
Mrs. McColsky?
Here.
Mrs. Severino?
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Here.
Mrs. Sharon and Celia?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mr. Dolkus?
Here.
Mrs. Kayden? Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we are going to need to go into executive session for a period of thirty minutes to discuss a student disciplinary matter, which means that we are going to officially go into executive session here and then we will be going to a separate room and be back in thirty minutes. So, at that point, it will be roughly seven o'clock. We apologize for this. We wanted to give enough time to be able to make sure that everyone that had the opportunity to be present would be. So, first, can I get a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? So, we will be back here at seven o'clock.
Good evening, I apologize, the board needs 10 more minutes, I apologize.
Okay, thank you everyone for being patient, Ken, I have a motion to exit executive session.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we are back, and starting up with Section 3 Presentations, the Mark Newby Green Team is going to present on their rain garden Sustainable Jersey Schools presentation.
Okay, so while we're waiting for the projector to load up, I'm going to introduce myself. My name is Cara Boiler, I'm here to share a presentation on behalf of the Newby Elementary Green Team at Mark Newby Elementary School. And so, really quick, since it's a convoluted process, I'm going to explain how you can find this if you want to. So to get a copy of tonight's presentation, you can go to the district website, near the upper right-hand corner of the website, you would click under "Menu", and then under the "About Our District" column, there's a selection for Board of Education. On the left, you would select the Board Meeting Agenda, and then in the upper right of the Board Documents page, you would select Meetings, under the Meetings, you would click on the April 24th meeting, and that would be on the left column of the page. And when you click "View The Agenda," our PDF will be under number 3 for the presentations. Okay, so, a little bit about who we are, we are the Mark Newby Elementary Green Team. The Green Team, I'll scroll up a little bit, or click, there we go. Okay, so the Green Team started in about 2012, and there was a group of young elementary students, they were grades K to 2, and they got together and they decided that they wanted to have a garden at their school. So they approached their teachers and their parents, and one of the parents was able to write a grant with the Whole Kids Foundation, and they got a vegetable garden installed at the side of Mark Newby Elementary School. And in order to maintain the garden and part of the maintenance plan was that there was going to be a formulation of an after-school club. The after-school club took care of the garden, did plantings, when they grew vegetables, if there was an excess or surplus that wasn't used by the students, they would donate it to the St. Paul's Food Pantry, and this existed for several years. And then, as we got into, I would say about 2017 or 2018, I was about to have a baby, and I didn't want to run the after-school club anymore. So we formed a group of parents, so the group of parents and teachers, we decided that we were going to partner with Sustainable Jerseys For Schools. And Sustainable Jersey For Schools is how Zane Elementary was able to get their playground expansion at their school, and we thought that this would be a good segue for us to also be able to get some projects at our school that were green projects, garden projects, and try to continue what Zane did at other elementary schools. So we started working with Sustainable For Jerseys Schools, we documented about 15 initiatives that exist within our school and also within the district. Some of them include Breakfast After The Bell, some staff professional learning days also are under the blanket of sustainable actions. So these all accumulated points, and we were able to document over 150 points. And with that, we got priority for grants, so we were able to apply for a grant in 2019 in the fall. And when we got it, the project was to install a rain garden. So, I'm going to move down a little bit. I'm going to skip ahead of this. This is just to tell you that we got our grant with Sustainable For Jerseys Schools, and also their partner was PSENG. PSENG and the New Jersey Education Association are two partners with Sustainable For Jerseys Schools. So in the fall, the winter, and the spring, schools have the opportunity to apply for grants, they have three cycles, and it depends on which grant cycle their partner is. So we have a little video where we're going to show you what the rain garden kind of looks like today.
Welcome to our new rain garden!
Mark Newby Elementary Schools Green Team welcomes you to the organization's proudest project, our rain garden. Completed during the summer of 2020, it is a green space that has situated in what was previously a rarely-used corner of our playground. The students worked with their advisors to create a lush landscape to minimize the runoff from the school's property into our nearby waterways, and also benefits neighborhood wildlife.
That was really cute, I didn't actually participate in creating that video because I was taking care of a newborn. So most of this project actually happened without me, and also there was COVID. So the installation and a lot of the outreach that we were meant to do in order to complete our grant unfortunately couldn't happen. So, that's why I'm here tonight. So, I wanted to continue a little bit because we have this idea, where do we go from here? How can we grow this project and how can we make it work for other schools? So Donna Helms, who wrote the grant and also documented all the district initiatives for us, she now has her son at the middle school, and she and I have been speaking together about her plan to hopefully work with Dr. Ostroff at the high school and Mr. Klein at the high school, so we can document initiatives at all the schools within the district and get everybody certified. So if we are able to do this within the next school year, we would have, every school in the district is certified, any school will have priority for grants in the fall, the winter, and the spring. So, I'm going to leave this with you, this is, if you're interested in learning more or you want to help, we suggest that you contact a PTA representative at your school. And if you reach out to them, I'm sure most of them have my contact because I'm on an elementary PTA, a middle school PTA, and also now I will be on the high school PTA. And then, on the last page, if you're able to find this on the Board of Education website, I've included our Green Team email, my cellphone number, and then access to our social media accounts for the Mark Newby Green Team. Thank you.
Thank you Cara, that's incredible work that you've all been doing over at Newby, and excited to see where it comes, or where it goes next with the middle school and high school too. Okay, that was our presentation for the day, for the evening, so moving on to Committee of the Whole, I need a motion to enter Committee of the Whole, please.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a couple of, yeah, of things that we are going to discuss for Committee of the Whole tonight. We're going to invite Chief Carey to pull up a chair and take the public comment mic, so that he can participate in the discussion. so that he can participate in the discussion with us. The first thing on our agenda to discuss tonight is a shared services partnership that we've been working on for quite some time with the Collingswood Police Department, that we are calling a Safe Schools Partnership. And this would be a shared services agreement between both organizations in an effort to work on more, creating a more collaborative partnership between the two when it comes to safety and security in our schools. We wanted to take this time because the Board normally has the opportunity to discuss things during our individual committee meetings. We didn't have the time before this was finalized, so we wanted to take the time, and we felt it was important to discuss it publicly anyway to make sure that all community members are also aware of the partnership and what will be going into it. So all Board members should have received a copy of the agreement. There was a second copy that was emailed out this earlier today, but that, if I am understanding it correctly, I'm going to ask either Chief Carey or Dr. McDowell to explain that to us, was really not any change in the roles or the language. It was some of the beginning parts that the lawyers just needed to make sure had the correct wording. Is that right?
That's correct. Well, it was just formatted in outline format so that you could go to specific subsections rather than it be a continuing rolling narrative.
Okay.
But the content is consistent with what you received last week.
Okay, so that what we received on Friday is the same language that was in the document that you sent earlier today?
Yes, it was taking the framework and just putting it in a shared service agreement format.
Okay, so I wanted to start with that, make sure that that was clear for everyone, that no actual language had been changed since the last time we had had the opportunity to review it. So Matt and I have been working with Chief Carey and Dr. McDowell and Mary Mealy on this a lot, so we already kind of have a better understanding, I think, of what this framework looks like. So I thought it would be a good idea to allow some of the other Board members who haven't been involved in the conversations quite as much to ask some clarifying questions and talk about any concerns they might have with any of the language that's in the agreement. Does that make sense? Okay. So take it away.
I mean, I can also, I can also just share too. So throughout this entire process, I would say when the first time Chief Carey came to one of our Board retreats and the topic of an SRO came up, I was probably the loudest critic against a school resource officer in the high school. And I still remain that way, but I think through this conversation and talking with Chief Carey, we got to a very good place about what it is that we, what the school needs and what the town needs. And what I see within this, the spirit of this agreement is finding somebody who is a true liaison and a support for administrators when the need arises to have to call the police about something that is happening. And I think what really resonated with me when Chief Carey expressed this is having somebody who knows what to do when something happens, but then also knows what not to do. And I think that we have had our situations where we've seen in the past that the wrong response has led to further complications and further issues, whereas having somebody who can support our administrators take this load off of them in terms of liaising, liaisoning either with other police departments, with county or other organizations, so that they can be then working with students. This is not a disciplinarian. This is not somebody who's going and pulling kids out of classrooms. And this is not even somebody who ideally is on campus all the time. Somebody who's housed at, in the administrator building, is providing supports with the administrators. I also see this as an agreement where we learn, and as Board, our role is to continue to ask questions, continue to make sure that it's meeting the spirit of what we want, and then continuing to be flexible and requiring what it is that we would like to see from this. So that will be feedback throughout the course of the year, and I think us asking questions periodically about how this program is working, what it's looking like, and are we getting the results our school's seeing? Is this still something that we need?
Can I follow up on something you just said? So I have a few questions, so, and one relates directly to what you just said. So, the first is visible, first falls under visible presence on campus. Board members were advised that the liaison officers, liaison officer, would have limited interactions with students only basically in an emergency situation. But on page, two, 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 page four, under work schedule, it says the school liaison officer provides a visible deterrent to crime and shall maintain a physical presence on the exterior and interior grounds of school campuses. So I'm not sure that I understand that. Can someone give clarity on that?
Do you want to explain what your thought process was with that?
Sure, so part of that visible deterrent would be the same thing that we have now with the officers that are out front assisting with drop-off at school. So they are on campus, they are outside of the school, and on occasion they do come inside of the school. I would envision this person to be in the school to meet with the administrator as someone else in that think tank when something happens and you would have questions they would want answered. And again, the point of it would be to have that one dedicated person to build that rapport and relationship with the administrative staff here. So as far as the visual deterrent, I would say the only thing outside of that would be is preparedness. And I would say target hardening is what they would call it in the law enforcement profession, but really that is making outsiders know that there is a law enforcement presence at least on the school campus in the event that someone would want to do something bad at the school. So it wouldn't be in regard to within the school building as much as maybe a marked police vehicle outside of the building.
Right, we were also informed that there wouldn't be a marked police vehicle outside of the camp.
So in the new, in the updated language that you received on Friday, we, I shared that we met with the leadership, and we clarified a few things where there were some discrepancies. That was one of the discrepancies.
So now there will, there will be?
Well, Chief, you can describe the rationale.
There is a lot to be said for having a visual deterrent outside of the school for someone that may be wanting to come into the school that does not belong here. For instance, when we had someone in our school building that did not belong here, had there perhaps been a marked police vehicle outside, they may not have come into the building or something to that degree. But it's nothing to affect the inside environment of the school. It's really to deter people from outside coming into the building, and that would be that visual deterrent.
So, then in your estimation, that would stay in there, not the marked car, but the interior grounds of school campuses? Because to me, that, when I read that, that gives the feeling that this individual will be walking the grounds of the school.
So if I could just make comment to that as well, that would be more giving the authority for that person to be in the school building, more than they're going to be stationed in the school building. So maybe the language there isn't overly clear, but the intent there would be to have it covered in the agreement that that officer would be assigned to the inside and outside of the building.
Okay. On another part, I'm just trying to stick within the same thing of visible presence on campus. On page five, it says that the handgun will be openly displayed. Is that?
Yes.
I thought that that was not, that is?
So I can, I can maybe even give a visual to help with that. So openly displayed would be, the officer might have a jacket on like me, but I am wearing a weapon. So if anyone could see, I do have a weapon on. It's just not a concealed weapon because it's not tucked into my clothing so that you couldn't see it. But it doesn't mean that they wouldn't have some type of exterior jacket on or something that would be covering that weapon. It is a tool of their job that needs to be accessible in the event that something does happen in the school. But that is just means of access, and they might have handcuffs as well. So it would be, that would be open display.
Right.
But we had discussed on the meeting on Thursday about that because that was a confusion that we had and had talked about. So first that they would be in a, what did you call it, an educational uniform? So like what Chief Carey is wearing right now, or a polo or something like that, and that for the, at least the very beginning of the school year, the first month or so at least, to always be sure that it's covered the way he has it now so that the first impression of that person is not that a weapon is being.
Yes, and I think that's terminology. Covered versus concealed are different as far as law enforcement terminology is concerned. Concealed would be, like I said, inside the pant where you would have to, you would have a hard time getting to your weapon in the event that you needed it. So covered and concealed are very different terms.
Okay, and then just one other question that's still within this. And this wouldn't be so much for Chief Carey, but this would be more for Dr. McDowell. So if this individual is going to be highly visible, have we solicited student voice? Because I feel like at a recent Board meeting, we had a number of students speak out against an SRO, which while I know this is not an SRO, and I know we've, we're making that very clear, it's not an SRO, there are parts of this shared service agreement that does read like an SRO. So I just want to make clear that we're listening to the students in the building.
So let me just provide some clarity. We're not ignoring the students in the building either. And so this is not an SRO. This is a liaison that'll be working across eight campuses. Law enforcement officers are in our schools, specifically our secondary campus, almost daily. And so, the nature of interaction for most students is minimal at best. And so this particular role would be providing technical assistance and support across multiple campuses, whereas a school resource officer would be stationed in one location, interacting with students for a specific reason. And so the intent behind this is not necessarily to create a, to create something that walks and talks like an SRO. Our needs have dramatically shifted. And so when we think about the level of support that's been coming or being requested from school administrators across the district, all of the areas are the shades of gray that they are not prepared to handle or what this role would help us do a better job of addressing. There would be instances where the identified liaison would be on this campus providing levels of support, but that would not be their full-time position. And so when we think about the level of interaction, we already, the difference between this and what currently exists is that we probably have anywhere from six to eight police officers in our buildings weekly for varying reasons. This would provide a level of consistency and a level of relationship between school administration and local law enforcement, which would probably allow us to minimize the level of visibility on campus because we're not having to start from scratch every time a new officer steps on campus.
Okay, and I just had just a few, just one or two more questions, and this just has to do with the cost benefit to the district. And just, this actually builds off of something you just said in terms of something that administrators are asking for. I'm assuming that they're asking for support in the area of, you know, basically things that are happening outside that are kind of trickling into the buildings. So, has any consideration been given to hiring an additional guidance counselor who could liaison with the police department? This person would have, so basically someone who could give kids all of the services that, you know, that the liaison is going to, that we've been told that the liaison is going to provide to our kids. But then they could also, part of the time, work with kids. Like I just wonder if we couldn't liaison the other way.
So we currently have guidance counselors who do liaise with local law enforcement. What they are also ill-prepared to deal with is the bag of edibles that were being distributed on campus. The weapons that are confiscated on campus. The domestic situations that are taking place that are bleeding into the schools. They're not equipped to deal with some of those core pieces. So those are some of those shades of gray that have been articulated to us by our administrators, not just across this campus. So I don't want us to relegate the conversation to high school. We're having these same conversations even in some of our elementary schools, and they're just asking for support. And so our counselors are liazing with local law enforcement, but we need an additional layer of support.
So that's not, am I wrong? That's not a liaison. That's a police, that's a police job, right? So like, if you find edibles or something.
I'm just giving you an example.
No, no, I know, I know, but I'm saying like something, an issue like that, you're, we're calling the police because that's a police matter, right? That's not a liaison issue. Like that's a, that's a police matter. Like that's not something that we're going to handle with a liaison.
I think the, I think the argument for, for having a specially trained, and maybe this, I know some people have some questions about training, and this could be where Chief Carey jumps in about that. But the difference between the way we have things set up now, where as Dr. McDowell said, a, you know, something happens, and all of the things that are in here, as a quick aside, are in here per what our current MOA says. So the point of the school liaison officer or any police officer that would enter our building, the only time there would be contact with students would be because it was required by the MOA, not because administrators were feeling overwhelmed and needed a second set of hands. That is very specifically not what their, what their job would be. That being said, the difference between the way things work now that something was found and needed to be confiscated, the police get called, and whoever happens to be on duty at the time is the one that shows up. They may know how, have, they may have had training with juveniles and kind of know how to manage the situation. They very well may not have. And the difference with having a dedicated officer whose job it was to basically deal with all school issues is that they would have training specifically around juvenile justice alternatives to, to, I don't know what, what is that called? Alternatives to incarceration or something like that.
Sure, diversionary.
Diversion programs, thank you, and that sort of thing. And so for every single one of those calls from elementary to high school, this person, we would know who we were getting and that they were selected by the school district, by the police department, by perhaps even some of us to know that they're not coming in here not knowing how to talk with students or deal with students appropriately. So I think that was part of the goal with something like this. Do you want to, does anyone who had questions about training, Mary, does that, do you have more? Okay.
Reagan?
Oh.
Yes? Respectfully, I think we've been talking about something like this for years. And we just got this document at 3:34 on Friday, the first draft. I think we all should need some time to digest because the devil's in the details. And maybe it's my, you know, day job, but I have a lot of questions about this document. I think I won't be, feel comfortable voting on this tonight. I don't know if I'm the only one who wouldn't feel comfortable voting on it. I think we need to talk about some details. Again, I think on concept, I think it's a great idea, but it's not supposed to take effect for months. So I think, I think the Board, at least I, would be more comfortable if we had a chance to discuss.
So, well, first of all, we wanted to take some of this opportunity. That's why we asked Chief Carey to be here to ask some of those questions now. And then, I don't understand what you were just saying to me, so you should say.
So I just want to make sure, so the framework that was introduced during our committees is what we're looking at. The, I don't want us to get confused in terms of the format, but the framework, the content, is what was presented and distributed during our committee work. We just placed it into an actual financial agreement. And so the, the, the content of what we're debating was part of what was presented during our committee. And so I think that the reason why we had to clean up the copy was for the actual financial piece.
You mean retreat, or do you mean committee meetings?
Our committee meetings this week.
I didn't, we didn't. Right, exactly, exactly. We didn't have the document to talk about.
We wouldn't take from January till April to discuss the document. Yeah. Like, we were shown the details of it in the committees, and now having to discuss.
So, quick question. Is all this written in concrete essentially? Or is this sort of fluid, and we have the opportunity to discuss this a little bit further even after we vote on it tonight and just agree that this needs to happen on some level? And then we can kind of nail out the details later on if we needed to? If there were any changes, anybody had any major concerns about it?
I think in the same way that Mr. Craig and I kind of talked through some of the language on Thursday, if there was anything that was a, was something that could be agreeable, we could just amend it now before we vote on it. I don't, because I think the basic framework is what's here. And I don't know that that much, some language could change, but yeah, otherwise. So like, so Chris, for instance, what, what are some of your concerns?
Reagan, it would take way too long. I don't know. Does anybody else feel this way? I don't know. Does anybody else feel this way? Maybe we could circumvent this?
I would just push back and say that I don't agree that this document lines up with the basic framework that we have discussed previously. I think I said in the previous board meeting that I am in favor of having a liaison type of person to help coordinate services in the, like, we'll call it the outside world and the schools. What's written here in the agreement is mostly about police enforcements and police actions, with some mention that they're going to make the schools a safer place, and very little discussions about what a liaison actually is doing and liaising about, and what issues are being addressed specifically in the liaison role.
So I can help clarify some of that. This framework is basically what the MOA is. So what is already standing, what we've already signed off on, the agreement that we have, that the actions a law enforcement officer can and cannot take when they're called to the school, when they should be called, when they should not be called, what level of involvement they have in different things. So that's what this framework is. So that, they are already juvenile law, attorney general guidelines, and the MOA that we sign. All this document does is allow us to dedicate a single officer to be that liaison so that you're not calling whoever is working that day and relying on them to be overly familiar with the MOA and to have specialized training with juveniles and to have specialized training as a school resource officer or a school liaison officer. So a lot of the framework are things that are not vendable because they are things that we are already bound by. The liaison agreement or the shared service agreement would be nothing more, again, than dedicating one single person to be the point for the school district and be assigned to the school district so that we can ensure or better ensure that investigations are properly handled within the framework that we need to operate.
And then would I be correct in understanding that once, let's say we voted on this tonight, we all agree that... Or it passes. This is not a job description. It is not a job contract. Those things are to be written and negotiated afterwards, correct?
So I think that's the bigger, longer conversation, right? And that is getting the program to work in Cowingswood the way that it should. And a program that everyone is in agreement that is going to best benefit the students here. The framework is, again, nothing more than what we already have in place. It's just formalizing that so that we can move forward with dedicating one person to be the point for the police department to the school.
So the shared service agreement is to say that we are... Bless you. That we are moving forward with a school liaison officer. What... And outlined in this agreement is what a school liaison officer is allowed and not allowed to do per the MOA. The next step after that is to create a job description and find the... Find a person that fits that job description of what we are looking for, which I think this whole board, for the most part, would agree, is not a student-facing role. It is an administrative role that is working with administrators to streamline the processes when police are needed to be called to the building, as well as helping with the... A lot of the outside issues that are bleeding into our school buildings, that they are most likely dealing with on the weekends or the evenings or things like that. And then also helping with any of our safety drill protocols that come up along the way. Do I have all of that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So like, all of these things, I think we've had some discussions with... I've had some discussions with you, Chief Carey, about this. And I think we are in agreement about many of these services that need to be had. My issue is that that's all being said, but this document in front of us is essentially a document saying we would like to have a police officer on campus doing police officer things. And if the... What's covered in here is already covered in the MOU, why doesn't this document speak more about the liaison job? What issue needs to be addressed by the liaison? Like, what sticking points and what will they be doing in the liaison role? Instead, we have this document that apparently says what is said already in the MOU, that when you read it, says stuff like, I think Mary mentioned, which is, "We'll have a visible presence inside the school as a deterrent." Which, you know, I know we can talk about, "Well, this really means that." But then that just relies on everyone who's party to this agreement having some unspoken agreement that this is exactly how we're going to execute what's not on paper. And that's... I would say that my general concern there.
I hear what you're saying, but so let me... The documents that you... That we sent out on Wednesday, there's two. One is the actual framework, which is the legalities around the role. The second document, which had the cover page, was really what we're envisioning. And so the equivalent that I can point you to is the formal job description of a school nurse versus what our school nurses do every single day. And so there's the formal legalities of what's required in terms of their certification, what they have to be legally able to provide. And then there is, well, this is what they're actually doing.
Can I ask a question about this? So I think I'm talking about the right document, the one with the cover page that has the key responsibilities. Is that the one? The one, two, three key responsibilities? Yeah. So... Okay.
So they are the talking points that I asked you all about in January to come up with what we would envision the program looking like.
This, right? The Safe Schools Partnership Agreement? Okay, okay, great. No, I'm sorry. I wasn't clear on which one was which. So, you know, just to the point that we've been saying about sort of what this role is going to be and it's sort of differing in what has... I feel like one of the things we talked about was on page five of that document, the third key responsibility for the SLO is labeled "Community Policing Strategies." And it says, "The school liaison officer and CPD will work with CPS to develop community policing activities to strengthen the relationship and trust between law enforcement, students, teachers, and administrators. Examples include law-related education and students using lessons curricula approved and advanced by the school liaison officer supervisor and CPS, community policing activities, and mentorship programs." So that actually does seem like quite a great deal of contact between a possible SLO and students. So I was just wondering why you see this as key to the role of a liaison?
I can easily answer that because we're already doing that now. We have lead in the fifth grade, so that's already happening. So these things are already happening across the district as it stands now. Newbie, we have a kickball game coming up in May with the fifth grade that we have every year. So these are the things that are already happening, and it's just why I put them in recommendations on what this position should look like because they are things that are working currently. Another part of that could be social media, trainings that we could coordinate with the prosecutor's office to help. But again, they're all things that need to be talked about and discussed at length, taking on some of the programming that we currently have with the school and making sure that that's part of this program.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure how strengthening the relationship and trust between law enforcement, student, teachers, and administrators has anything to do with a liaison. Is... That definitely seems like more of an SRO, right? Like, I'm just not sure. And lead, I know lead is a definite... That's a program. And that's what... That happens in fifth grade. I think I'm just confused, I think.
Can I ask a question real quick? I'm sorry. Can you identify exactly what it is that you really would like the role to look like instead of saying what we really are careful about in this document? How it explains, I understand what you're saying. But what would be the alternative language that we can put in here that would sort of make it more viable for you? Or understandable, or something that you could wrap your head around?
No, I don't think I can because I feel like that's not my... My role is not to say what should be in here. All I can say is that when I'm looking at this, to say that if we're talking about strengthening the relationship and trust between law enforcement and students, that I don't know that that has any place in this document.
I hear you. I just think that Reagan asked us what we would rather prefer to be in this document because we have the ability to sort of, you know, change it up now if we needed to.
I just... I'm perplexed.
I read it as, I think, the consistency of having the right person come and responding to situations like that arise, particularly having a relationship with administrators so that they know when they do call or something happens and they're not sure whether they need to call the police, they can trust that the person is going to give them advice timely and efficiently and advise them on what needs to happen.
Could we have...
We had situations at the elementary school where a student brings a steak knife to school in their lunch bag. Now technically, that's bringing a dangerous weapon into school. And if the wrong person is making the call there, then you could be calling the police. This is somebody now we call, you confiscate the weapon, you make a phone call home to parents to say about what happened, and then that's it.
So maybe could we actually talk about some of the training? Because I know that was something that was going to be about, and I think it relates to what you just said. So, you know, I think this shared services agreement really hinges on there being this bright line between student misconduct and delinquency, or, you know, whatever we're calling it. But we know that in practice, there is, as you said, Dr. McDowell, like, these shades of gray, right? Overlap between those two things, depending on who's assessing the situation. So I guess regarding training, my first question would be about what training this SLO would receive? In... There's a lot of language in here about restorative practices, cultural competence, the use of DEI lenses that we are committed to adopting overall in this district. So what would be their training in these areas, right? To sort of help administrators and help CPD see these shades of gray? So that's one element of training. I think there's another training on what information would school staff receive and how they should interact with this SLO, right? How would they know when they should and shouldn't call on this SLO to address different situations? And then one more question around information and training is, would students and their families receive training on what their rights are when it comes to interacting with law enforcement?
Chief, do you want to tackle a piece of that in terms of the first...
So the training for the SLO, we do have state-mandated training that any officer assigned to a school exclusively needs to take. That is state-mandated, and that has to happen. Outside of that, I would envision this person going to any of the continuing education classes that the school would handle because they would primarily be assigned to the school. And there should be congruity between the training that staff is getting and the training that that officer is getting. Outside of that, we do have CIT training as well, so it's crisis intervention team training. And there is other specialized training that's available. It's just having that dedicated person to be able to take that training. And I think a big piece of that training falls into what we think this program looks like, what we think the training needs to be. So there's required training that has to happen. But I think that as a whole, if we're able to get into an agreement, we could discuss on what training we feel would be beneficial for that person to have.
I was just going to say, would there be a possibility for us to recommend training for this particular liaison?
Yes. So that speaks to... So what we sent out on Wednesday was the framework, which are all of the legalities with having a formal relationship with the borough. And then there's the vision. The vision would need to be co-constructed between the Board of Education and the borough after we've determined whether or not we are moving forward with a formal agreement. And so when we think about some of the areas of focus, and these are recommendations that need consensus, or things like the collaborative partnership between... With law enforcement, equity or alternative programs, emotional wellness, safe school building operations, crisis intervention, criminal justice reform, restorative justice, suspension reduction, diversionary programs, all of those would be encompassing in this. And the board does not forfeit their ability to help to co-construct alongside the borough what that actually will look like. And so the vision was so that we could begin having conversations. In terms of answering your question about training for staff, we would need to co-construct that because one of the things that has been very clear is we want to make sure that this partnership is not abused or misused for the wrong purposes. And so we are not seeking to increase the school-to-prison pipeline. We are not seeking to further exacerbate the existence of disproportionality in discipline. We are not seeking to dramatically increase referrals to law enforcement for normal disruptive school behavior. And so we would need some time in order to actually work through the details as partners between the police department, district administration, and the board to make sure that we first identify the right candidate to be able to fill the role, and then make sure that we are constantly calibrating and making sure that we are all on the same page about what specific roles and responsibilities we want this position to occupy when they are in and out of our eight campuses. I know that much of our discussion really hinges on the high school, but I do want to make sure that I am continually communicating that every single one of our campuses has expressed a need for additional support. And so they would be traveling across multiple campuses.
I think the issue for many of us, I'll just talk for myself. The issue for me is that issue of communication. We, as a board, have been talking about this for years and have been able to come to consensus. And without any discussion in committee meetings, this was sent to our inbox on Wednesday with a vague reference to a meeting on Thursday that we weren't aware was happening, and some revision on Friday, and being asked to vote on something tonight. This committee of the whole is great to have discussion, but to be expected to vote on something when comments are going back and forth on, "Well, what should it say and said?" We shouldn't be rewriting it tonight. I just think voting on this tonight is irresponsible.
So we're not asking for you to rewrite the agreement. The agreement is a fiscal agreement. What we would be asking the board to vote on is whether or not to move forward with a fiscal agreement. And then that then opens up the opportunity for us to then write, rewrite, revise the roles and responsibilities while a candidate or candidates are being identified to be screened and vetted by the school district.
My point is, we had a lot of... A lack of consensus on whether we could... Whether we could agree to have this... And I'm generally in support of a partnership. But we have yet, as a board, to come to consensus on whether we want this. And so now it feels like very quickly it was put before us, saying, "Here it is. It's happening. We'll work out the details later." And I'm very uncomfortable with that.
Well, I apologize if anyone feels that way because I was... I think Matt and I were trying to be, as communicative, excuse me, as we could about, you know, we can't meet as a full board on a regular basis to discuss this. So we were kind of being the representatives that were negotiating this for the board. But my understanding after the January retreat was that the idea of this was something that everyone, for the most part, felt comfortable with. They had some issues with being very clear about what it would look like, what it would not look like, and whether it would, you know, be student-facing or not. But overall, the understanding that there was some sort of a need for better communication between the police department and the school district. And so we kind of took that, and certainly Chief Carey and Dr. McDowell took that information and went to work putting together this agreement. And the agreement itself is a shared services agreement, similar to shared service agreements that we enter into with buildings, and I'm pointing to Keith, with buildings and grounds that are financial agreements, and then the job descriptions that go along with when they're requesting a plumber or an HVAC person are separate and apart from the agreement, the financial agreement that this is. And I did double-check this with Chief Carey on Thursday because I was trying... I told them I was trying to read this from the perspective of a board member who was feeling strongly... of, of a board member who was feeling strongly that they were looking for reasons to vote no and was asking, and it seems that my, my understanding of it, and I do not believe he was being dishonest with me, that the reason that a lot of these things are in there is because it's a requirement to go through the list of things that a police officer is bound to do under the MOA and things that, that a police officer is not supposed to do when you're looking at differentiating disciplinary misconduct from criminal offenses, for instance. And how information can be shared from police department to school district and school district to the police department, so things like that. The, the role itself is a, is a thing that is separate and apart from this. But this step comes first because we can't hire someone if we don't have an agreement first. That was my understanding of all of this, and I, I thought that we had, we had worked to kind of make sure that folks were as informed as they could be. And, you know, apologies if that was not the case. We were, I think, hoping that if there were major issues that, that folks would reach out to us since the, the email was, was, was gone out on Wednesday.
So I really want to say that I appreciate all the hard work that you guys put into this and sort of representing all of us and trying to look at it from the perspective of people that maybe weren't so sure about this. I, I want to thank you for that. And I, I hear Fiona, and I, I want to say that maybe we can come up with some sort of definitive timeline since that we talked about this in January. And of course, we've all had kind of plenty of time to digest it without really having a lot of conversations about it since then until recently. So can, can we identify like a specific timeline of when, being that you just said we all can't meet to discuss this on a regular basis? So can we identify a timeline of when we can expect to be informed about how to develop this position? So that way, we're not sitting here in a couple of months from now and everybody's saying the same thing of like, wait a minute, we thought we were going to discuss this and we really didn't have time to, and now we're asked to vote on it, kind of thing. So can we talk about a timeline that we can actually plan for and have on a calendar that we're going to be discussing this on a regular basis?
So you mean not for the shared service agreement contract itself, but for the job description role?
Correct. I'm fine with everything tonight. I'm just saying, you know, to vote on this tonight, I'm just saying in the future, if anybody has concerns about actually developing this role as we want it to be, and, you know, that they're, they really feel part of the conversation involved in that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could develop an ad hoc committee to specifically write the job description in concert with Chief Carey and anyone else that he would deem appropriate from, from his side of things to, to ensure that this role is very clearly spelled out in a way that makes both the board comfortable and the police department comfortable with, with the role.
Looking for my button, sorry. So I, I also want to thank you all for, for your hard work. I, I appreciate that this is an issue that has, you know, been, been controversial in this district, and I, I feel that this, this seems to be a nice compromise between, you know, the, the one position of having an SRO to our current situation where, you know, we, we do have our climate officers. This, this does feel like a happy medium to me. In terms of, you, you discussed the board being periodically informed and having an opportunity to, to, you know, comment and see how things are going. What is the timeline for that kind of check-in with the board members?
It's in the agreement itself, and I'm going to, performance reviews, August, November, February, and May of each school year. And I, I feel like part of that at least, I mean, certainly the performance review is a personnel issue, so that could be discussed in personnel and then reported out to the rest of the board.
I'm trying to vocalize, I think, why I have this, this discomfort with this agreement. I think it's because folks can see into it what they want. And what I mean by that is I think some folks might see this agreement and say, well, great, this is a way for us to basically have a palatable SRO and, and meet that need. Other folks might say, well, this is a, a way for us to not quite have an SRO, but I guess have someone well-trained to, to work with children. And then we're also on the side talking about how this is actually just a, a liaison position. And I feel as if there's just so many different subtexts or sub-contexts being thrown around that without clarity in, in this document, in this shared service agreement of what this is, I'm not comfortable with it. I'm going to say flat out, I, I, I am not comfortable with having a, a school resource officer in the schools, a police officer there to, that would have a lot of contact with, with students. And we can say that this is not the position, but again, that's not what this document to me reads like. There's also so many different, I think, issues at play. One is, we're saying we need a liaison between the schools and outside services. And I, I'm not yet clear as to why that liaison has to be a police officer or not. But then we're also saying, well, we need a police officer specifically dedicated to schools because we need a police officer who's well-trained in working with kids, which I understand, you know, not everyone's great at working with kids. But also, if the American, you know, if, if the census data is correct, this area is about 20% kids. And it's, is it too much for us to ask that our, that police officers are able to service 20% of our population already? That's, this is, this is, but, but my point is, my, my, my point is that, that if, if we're, if we're saying that we need, we need to pay for police officers to be specially trained to work with our, our, our students because otherwise we, we, we can't have that relationship with the, with the, a, a police department, then, then we should call it what it is rather than say, hey, this is a liaison to connect services.
I think we're, but we're acknowledging that what's happening right now is not working for either side, either the schools that are asking for support and the police department that's saying that they're being, they're having to send, send people here more, like. And I think that this is an attempt to find a, a medium ground to not, to satisfy both needs, what both people are asking for. And we are being very conscious of the fact that we do not want a traditional school resource officer. And I think everyone from Chief Carey to everybody on the board has been very clear and open and honest about that from the beginning, that that's not what the goal of this is. Now, we could put whatever we want in the paper, but we have to trust the people that are here making the decisions. And if the people that are making the decisions are saying that this is what we want, then that's, I, I don't know what else we could write into a document, particularly a legal document, that's going to say something different than that.
I want to be clear that we're legally bound to have that relationship already. And that's what this document is, is the, the legally binding relationship that we already have in place. So this is nothing different than that. I think you're, you're perhaps looking too far into it. And it's not training someone to deal with a juvenile as much as give someone specialized training in juvenile law. So there's a difference there, right? So you're, you're concerned about the law enforcement lens this person might have, but I want them to have specialized training in juvenile law. At the prosecutor's office, they have different areas which with, you can get assigned. One of those would be the juvenile unit. So this person will be dealing almost daily with the juvenile unit and having trainings with the juvenile unit. Whereas now, that's not that person's primary responsibility, so they're not going to get that specialized training because that takes time. So what the officers get is an overview of dealing with a myriad of issues they might get called to during that day. If it's someone that's a liaison to the school, I'm going to want that person to have specialized training and a very crystal-clear understanding of what the MOA is so that we don't run into an instance where something is done incorrectly. Because people make mistakes, people don't have expertise in certain areas. This person would have an expertise in juvenile law and a clear and expert understanding of the memorandum of agreement that is already in place.
Right. And, and what, what you said was that this is, this MOU is already in place. And so what we're talking about here is that we, as a school district, will be providing funding to the police department to have, for that training.
Providing funding to the police department to get, to dedicate a single officer to be that liaison to the school district rather than relying on any of the officers responding to the school as it stands now.
So let me provide some clarity, Roger, because I, I want to, I want to make sure that I'm correcting the, the, the original statement. We are not seeking, we're not seeking a relationship for the purpose of working with children. We're seeking a, a more formal relationship to be able to provide levels of support to schools, and schools have children in them. And so making sure that we're crystal-clear about how this individual will navigate and work within the confines of the law when in the presence of children is what the, the legal agreement is. But in terms of the vision for the role, it's going to look different across eight different campuses in terms of what level of service this individual will provide to each of our schools. Whereas our elementary schools are going to have different needs in our middle or our high school. But what we're attempting to address is multiple years of our school administrators coming and saying, we need assistance. There are, there are areas that we are struggling with that we are ill-equipped to handle, and we need an additional layer of support that currently doesn't exist with our MOA because there's not, there's not an individual to be able to provide all of those bits and pieces across all of our campuses. And so what this does is it formalizes a relationship, and it allows our law enforcement agency to dedicate an individual to help us with specific needs across our eight campuses.
So it, we're, we're helping, we're providing funding so that we can have a dedicated law enforcement officer for the, for the schools, which if, if that's what's needed, fine, but then how does that help with liazing, liazing with, say, you know, child services or the foster system or other, other, I guess, other groups, other outside services departments that, that are involved in our children? Who then bring, I guess, those issues into the, into the, the school?
So some of those supports will be provided by social workers.
Right.
Some of those will be provided by psychologists, some will be provided by counselors in partnership. When things shift into law, when they shift into things that require multi-jurisdictional levels of support, we, we need an additional layer of expertise that's not currently in the role.
What does multi-jurisdictional mean there?
We support three very different communities. And so we, we, at least on this, this campus, we have relationships with three different law enforcement agencies, three different boroughs.
So this is, I think this is where, where, where my, my surprise came with this document, which is, you know, I think now I can see how this document lines up with what, what you're saying, right? This is a liaison for law enforcement purposes. We're talking about multi-jurisdictional, we're saying multi-jurisdictional in terms of, of like the police services and not multi-jurisdictional in terms of, again, other, other system-involved youth, say, in the foster care system or, or in other juvenile youth services. And so my point being that I understood this as being a role that would help tie those services together, but now there, it's more just law enforcement focused.
So Roger, I can speak to that. And, and again, until we agree to enter into an agreement and then lay out what that partnership really looks like, those are all pieces I think are needed to be in that partnership, right? But none of them are legally required to happen now. So handle with care is something that if we deal with something in someone's household, we have to report that to the school where that child goes. But it is nothing more than a piece of paper with a child's name that says handle with care at the top of it. The other issue that, that you see is if we're referring to some type of social service outside of the school and you're referring within the school, if you can't talk to that practitioner and have the two of them speak so that, make sure that we're guiding that person in the same direction. Now again, not legally required, but I think beneficial to the students if we do that. So I think they're all things that need to be figured out in that next step, right? They're all pieces of this program that I think would be beneficial, but not pieces that are legally binding that need to be in a contract. They're more of, what are the job responsibilities? What does the program makeup look like? Not the framework of it, which is the, the box of legality that we're, we're stuck in.
So, so just to clarify, and Chief Carey, I'll ask you this too. So there, there is the, what we would vote on tonight would be to enter into the agreement, and then we would continue to work together collaboratively to continue to develop the job description and some of the concerns that, that people have here. Is that, is my, my understanding correctly?
Yes, and thus far, I, I believe that Reagan, Matt, and Dr. Middell, myself, have, have had some of that discussion on what the program might look like. But again, that's going to, to need the entire board approval to, to move forward with. What we're looking for today is just an agreement that we're ready to take that next step to build a program that works.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that, that was how it was communicated to us at the retreat as well, that, that the board would have say in writing the job description, you know, and being a part of that process. Is that, is that still?
Correct. Where the board doesn't have that say is in the framework of this because it's already covered with the MOA that's legally binding and already signed off on it. Yes.
There, there's issues within this document that the board has concerns about, issues that would, some of it would be considered part of job description. So we have to, you know, this is more than just saying, yes, we're interested in a partnership. It's saying, yes, we're interested in this document right here with which many of us have issue.
If you have issue with that, you have issue with the MOA that you've already in, in agreement with.
Right, well, if we're, well, so I, what, what, I think what you just described there in terms of, of when you're talking about liazing with other services, that's a, like, that's a conversation we've had, and, and I think we're in agreement with that. Of course, why is that not, like, I don't know if you have answered.
It's not, it's not in this because I'm not the person to make those sole recommendations. That's something that the board would have to sit down and discuss, right? That's, that's the further discussion that we're asking for. I, I'm not going to make those recommendations. I'm not a board member. And you were all representatives of the school district. So that's a discussion we all need to have on what programming outside of the legally required programming we would like to have in this partnership.
So I guess that's my question, which is to, to us then, is why, why couldn't we have that type of language within this agreement itself? Why would it have to wait till a stage later to be, to be added? And by, by language, just to be clear, I mean that, that this position would have a responsibility for helping with liazing with all these other services that the youth may be involved in outside of the school.
So I'm looking at, the partnership should facilitate effective, timely communication and coordination of efforts for CPS and CPD, the purpose of which is to establish a mutually beneficial framework that both schools and law enforcement can work within to achieve shared goals. Does everybody see where I'm looking? So the primary goals of the share, safe schools partnership, excuse me, are two. Is this the part that we're, we're having issue with? Foster a positive and supportive school safety climate, that the partnership will collaborate to expand school safety and prime, crime prevention efforts, reduce conflict, improve implementation of the memorandum of agreement with law enforcement, and support effective police interventions as a last resort for staff and student safety. Two, create and maintain safe and secure school environments. To create and maintain safe and secure school environments, the partnership will collaborate to reduce and prevent crime, violence, victimization, and fear in and around schools, and minimize the need for student involvement with the juvenile and criminal justice systems. Three, establish a clear and defined understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the two parties. To ensure an understanding of the roles, why do I keep forgetting? Safe schools partnership should clarify the respective responsibilities while ensuring that, that CPD retains administrative control, control over its officers, although CPS, meaning Collingswood Public Schools, manages the operational employment of the officers. Is there anything about that? That's the description of what this partnership is. Are we not in agreement about that?
So I think one of my, my concerns about this idea of sort of voting on this and deciding the details later, right, is that what we're also deciding on is how much we're going to pay, right? And if we decide, for example, that we want this SLO to have less of a role, right? Say as a group, like that's what a majority of us decide. Are we then overpaying, right, in a situation where we might not need as much as paying nine months of almost full salary? salary, right, for a law enforcement officer, right? So it's opening a door without much understanding of what's to come, right? And that's my concern with it.
Your, what's in the contract is the school year. You're paying for a full-time police officer to be on duty every single day for the entire school year and you will pay that.
Right, I think my understanding from the police department is it's either that or nothing.
So I think that you could, you know, definitely with that in mind and knowing what you've already paid for and knowing what you've already agreed to, to make sure that you have developed enough of a role for them to be involved in the ways that you really want them to be involved in, and, and, and kind of define that, knowing that you've already said, all right, we've committed to this money, so we're going to make sure that we, you know, have it set, have it laid out that we're going to get what we think that this person needs to, needs to do. And if, if by chance, I don't know if that's something that we can change later on down the line, of course, we're probably committed to that, you know, off the bat right now. But we can, we can define that and we can talk about that more. And I do think that that's something that is a valid discussion to have.
I think it's also, it's, it's, it's also important and I'm, I'm going to keep, I, I don't want to sound like a broken record. We have eight campuses, we have 2,200 students, we have 400 employees. And so when we think about the, the nuance from campus to campus, they're going to be very different. And so the needs are going to be different. And so when we think about what school leaders have asked us for, both elementary, middle, and high, this individual is going to be extremely busy. And so we're not, we're not going to be having to come up with creative ways for this individual to work. I think that if we sat in a room with all of our principals, they could give you a laundry list of how they could use this level of support in about a half hour because they've been asking for this for several years, at least as long as I've been here. If I talked with some of our teachers, elementary, middle, and high, they could share what some of the concerns are that they're also dealing with on their campuses that just require an additional layer of support that currently doesn't exist. And so.
What you mean by that is not that they are coming into the classroom and talking to students. It is domestic situations at home. It is things that are happening outside of school that are coming into the classroom and creating issues. And those are, that, that, those are issues that a police officer would be aware of because of the nature of when it was happening.
Right, so there's a couple of other pieces to unpack as well. So, I mean, again, we're here to decide on whether or not we want to enter an, into an agreement to have a dedicated officer be assigned to the school district, right? So that sounds easy, but on my end of things, we had an academy class start today, which is done in the end of August, and another one starts in July that's done in December. So I'm not going to assign a brand-new person or even put a brand-new person in front of the board for consideration. So I need to be able to backfill that position to cover the primary responsibilities of the department as well. So if you're wondering about a timeline, that factors into it also. The state-required training that I talked about is offered in July. That class fills up. So that person needs to have that training that's given in July to be eligible to enter the schools in September. So there is a timeline here, which is why the agreement and, and coming to a decision to move forward with that agreement is important and letting the details play out after because that could take months. Again, I was in front of you all in January and asked by mid-February to have some feedback as to what you did not want this program to look like. It wasn't until March when I reached out to you with the framework that anything moved forward. So if I sit back and wait longer, September is not going to be attainable. I'm not saying it's something we should rush into, but the agreement and agreeing to the things Reagan spoke to, those, those three pieces that she spoke to that are outside of the MOA should happen sooner than later so that we can start developing what the program looks like and I can staff the people that I have and present four or five individuals to you that you might think are a good fit and then get them into a class to be trained.
So, sorry. One of the things, I, I think this, the discussion and everything is great. I'm wondering, one of the options that we have, because I am cognizant of timeline, is that we're going to be back here on May 8th for a special board meeting. If we tabled until May 8th and I gave board members the opportunity to look this over and ask further questions, I think having this conversation out in public has been incredibly useful in terms of what our concerns are in areas. But if we are to table to May 8th, I think we still stay within our timeframe, but I don't want to see this get delayed further. If this is something that we all say that we do want to see happen.
Yeah, and I think whatever, whatever the concerns are beyond, you know, if there are some members of the board that are just not okay with a shared services agreement, period, that is, that is their right. If it is more of a, of a constructive, this is something that I feel is missing from this agreement and I would feel more comfortable if it was in it, but I do support the agreement, then I, we need you to be very clear about that very soon because I, I was not aware that that wa, that was an issue. I thought that that had been, you know, Matt and I really read over this as thoroughly as we could to really look through and make sure that it, it did not have anything that we felt was not in the spirit of what the board was, was representing as what they wanted, beyond the parts that are already written in the MOA. And we even struck some of the language on, on Thursday that, that Kevin said, you know, I put it in there because it was part of the MOA, but if it was getting confusing or may look like it was something that it wasn't, let's take it out. I, I guess if there is more of that, I, I don't, I'm not seeing it at the moment and I am not someone who is, yes, let's, let's bring a cop into the school at all. That is not my natural inclination. So I guess we really do need some clarity about, from, from those that have expressed issues beyond, you know, I'm not comfortable with a police officer on our school campuses regardless of why. We, we need some clarity about that very soon.
But it sounds like even if we vote on this tonight, we're going to have a chance to get that clarity. Am I, am I wrong? We're going to have an opportunity to have these discussions at length.
I'm concerned that the vote may not pass tonight. Based on, on the way folks are talking. And so this would give us until May 8th to work on ensuring that we have all of the votes that we need to make it pass.
I do want to clarify that this is something that the administrators have all advocated for in our schools. This is something that a lot of the teachers that you've talked to have advocated, have advocated in our schools. This is something that you guys have put a whole lot of time and effort in, into meeting with, with the chief and with Dr. McDowell on. And this is something that we do have an opportunity to have further input on and to, to develop the role that we really want it to be. Just to clarify, all that's correct.
And just to be clear, I thought this evening was to take a vote on whether or not you would all be interested in entering into a shared service agreement with the Borough. That's, that was the purpose of tonight. That's why I'm here. That's why the mayor is here. And I don't see another two weeks changing someone's mind to being okay with entering into agreement or not.
I don't think that's what the majority of us are saying. I think that.
That's what the vote is though, correct?
I think.
No, I think you're confusing the point.
I think the opportunity for the board to look over the document further and ask the questions.
So if I took out the language of the MOA and just put in there that tonight's, we're going to vote on entering into a shared service agreement with the Borough of Collingswood.
No, there's, there's details, even about the fiscal, like, you know, what if they take two-week vacation? I mean, like, there's details that we want to see in here that we don't see. We're spending over $60,000 and as you know, as people sitting in this audience know, the budget's been really crunched. So we want to make sure, like, all the details are ironed out. This is, I don't think, well, I'm in favor of this in, in theory, but the detail, the devil's in the details. And we just want to make sure that everyone's had an opportunity to weigh in.
Can I just say, say something real quick? I just want to, we'll meet with whoever wants to meet whenever, okay? But not just that clock is ticking, like the clock is ticking, okay? And we're not going to have anything in place and you're still going to be talking about it and you're still going to be looking at commas in agreements. I think Fred said that you're, you're agreeing to hire a dedicated person for the school year. You're going to be employing that person. It's a new position, so whatever you write in that job description, I don't care how detailed you do it, it's going to change after a couple weeks, okay? And the key is monitoring it, keeping an eye. So I urge you, we'll meet with, like, obviously if this process hasn't worked, this is the process that, that we, we were told with the process. If it's not, give us a process or just say no, okay? Save everybody the aggravation. But we need to get somebody hired quickly. As you may not believe this, it's a little difficult to get, get police officers hired and we need to move on it, especially to make sure we've got all the appropriate training done for a person that will be dedicated to school, dealing with school issues. So just timing is, is just key. And whatever you want to need, I don't, you don't need a committee, I don't need individual committees. A person wants to come talk, sit down with Kevin, sit with us, anybody, whoever wants to talk, we'll fill it all in to get the, get the information. Thank you.
Okay. So by May 8th, that does not mess up your hiring timeline. I understand that you had a plan of being here tonight, but, okay. Their meeting is next week. Um, I think to. Are you two really know? So the Borough's meeting is next week for them to approve this. So if we push it to May 8th, we are delaying it even further. So if it is, it is, excuse me?
We'll do, no, we'll schedule special meetings. We'll schedule, the Borough will schedule, this is.
If it pushes to June with the current scheduling, it's too late.
I don't know. This is a really important issue. There are more people that have talked to me.
Okay, okay, I get it. No, I hear you. But we're not, okay, but we're not, we're not doing public comment right now. So I get it. I thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Ray.
Um, I think you understand what I mean.
No, I don't. I think.
Mayor Malley.
Mayor Malley are not on the board and I wouldn't do this at your meeting. That's what I mean. That's all I mean.
I, I.
Okay. You, that, okay. Moving along. Okay, everybody. At this point, I don't think we're going to continue this discussion right now. The vote on this is later in the meeting either way. So whether we table it or not, we will discuss later in the meeting. I did want to move on and talk about some other things, budget-related, before we move on with the rest of our meeting. And, you know, try to keep things as civil and moving forward as possible. So in terms of the budget, we had, we took care to be sure that before we release specific details about the budget, that we have all of the information because leaking information or giving half information is never helpful. We've definitely learned that from the past. So I asked Dr. McDowell to just put together a very brief explanation of where we are with the budget right now and what to expect on May 8th. So can I ask you to do that at this time?
I can, I mean, it's, it's going to be pretty boilerplate. I mean, I had a statement that, that we prepared. We are, we started this budget process not in a very positive place revenues-wise. And so we don't want to get stuck in the weeds in terms of all of the details, but the simple issue is, is that the cost to educate our students is simply more. Everything costs more. And we are a school community that has continued to articulate and demonstrate how much we value in, in inclusive education, where we are putting our, our resources where our mouths are to ensure that we're keeping our students in district, to ensure that our students that have learning differences, their needs are met. And so all of those services, which includes salaries, benefits, transportation, student service contracts, and private tuition, all cost more. And so we've been working collaboratively with our principals, our supervisors, our union leaders, and our district finance team in order to make sure that we are doing two things. One, making sure that we're meeting the needs of all students within our district. And two, demonstrating our commitment for staff retention. And so we asked the board for additional time because we had a pretty significant gap that we needed to fill and we wanted to make sure that we got it right so that there was minimal disruption to student programming and minimal disruption to our staff who are here with us. And so as a result of that, the budget hearing was postponed to May 8th, but also, contracts will also be approved on May 8th. And so we will have all of those details once fully confirmed on, on May 8th. And so I don't have budget details to provide other than what I've, I've currently shared.
Would it be accurate to say that since our budget often reflects to the best of our abilities in a budget crisis, it reflects the values of our school district? And so any sort of major or wholesale cuts to any of our important educational programming is not on the table? There may be a, no, just that's the end of it. No major cuts to any program?
No, no, there should, there should be no, no cuts, no major disruptions to any of our programs. I mean, the, the bottom line is, is by having an inclusive budget development process that included principals, teachers, supervisors, and district personnel, we have multiple lenses, which helps to give us a more accurate picture. And so we are one of those districts that we, we operate with a very thin margin, but that's because we try to, to provide a wide range of support for all of our students. And so it is not our intent or our current plan to make dramatic changes to any of our, of our programming. There will be subtle tweaks, but we do not see programmatic closure. We do not see wholesale changes to the way in which we operate our schools.
And then just a few other, and some of these may be things that then Dr. McDowell is going to repeat during his superintendent report, but I just wanted to make sure to, to do some housekeeping highlights. Our, our board is engaging in their first day-long DEI training on May 6th. I believe it is either this week or next week. Dr. McDowell can correct me, but the, the staff has, is engaging in restorative justice community building training and, and students are, are engaging in affinity group training. Are you going to talk about the, the student leaders with Woodland as well?
Yes.
Okay. And Juneteenth?
Yep.
What about Mr. Larch?
Yep.
Okay, so he is going to cover everything that I was going to cover, so I'm just going to save that for his superintendent report instead and take a motion to exit committee of the whole. And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Section five is future dates and miscellaneous information. There's a whole lot on there with all of the end-of-the-year activities. As we've said a couple of times in this meeting, of special note is May, Monday, May 8th is the board budget hearing. Moving on to section six, routine board business. Motion to approve the minutes of the March 27th, 2023 regular board meeting and the April 17th, 2023 special meeting.
So who?
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the, the community, excuse me, opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict five-minute time limit per person during public comment. Mr. Craig will give you a 30-second warning. Please remember to state your name and address for the record before you begin.
Rick Pence, President of the College of Education Association. I will just start with wow. A lot of things I, I probably can offer. First, I want to say is this, this is starting my 24th year in this district here. Spent four years here as a student in this district on this. I, I am, went through, thank you to Dr. McDowell Administration, Board of Education for including the association in the budget process. It is important for me to. It is important for me to, uh, understand and make sure the board members know in the next two weeks, in your discussions about this budget process, that you are investing in the future of these students with the educators that have invested in this district. Because there is a lot of good educators that are here currently. There are a lot of things, uh, that, that if you don't take these educators, valued these educators, the culture and climate that we have spoke at, at past meetings, the stability of the secondary campus, these educators have the ability to handle this and change that. That's what I have seen in my 24 years here in Collingswood as a profession. I have been approached by, in my younger years, taken under the wing of the veteran teachers to show you the way of how things are going. We have to start thinking about the staff that we have here and value them and make them want to stay to help build what was great here. The capability can still happen. It's going to take dedication from you folks. Because one thing I can promise you, when I started here 24 years ago, none of you were in front of me. These educators stay here. Make them want to stay here. And it's the actions you are going to take. Whether it's dealing with the budget, whether it's dealing with shared services agreement, every action you take, these educators are watching you. You don't see many here. I can put hundreds of people in this room. That's not the fight we want. That's not the fight my leadership has put forth. You now need to start feeling what it's like to support these educators. Because now, they need it. I'm hoping this is going to happen in the next two weeks. Thank you.
(applause).
Uh, I'm Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer. Um, yeah, I, I really appreciated, uh, hearing a very, um, what I thought was a very in-depth discussion from the board on this question of the shared services agreement. I share a lot of the reservations that I heard, uh, tonight, and I, I do feel that, um, you know, I, I really feel like it's important not to lose sight in this of, uh, how it fits into the, you know, emphasis we've been talking about in the last several months about, uh, diversity, about not, uh, about not using carceral, you know, um, methods really, and, and using restorative methods in, uh, how this, how, how the school works. And, you know, the, the thing I, I don't quite see in, in watching this discussion, I don't know that I see a complete, you know, with Chief Carey, who my, my wife's on the advisory board, the police chief, I, I hear about this stuff. Um, you know, so I, I know, you know, that there, that I, I think the chief means well, but I don't know if I see enough of an agreement in principle between what I was hearing from board members and what I was hearing from him, like, about things like having, like, a deterrent effect at the school. There were things that, that worried me in this discussion, uh, about where this is going. Um, and I think this is going to be important, you know, especially, you know, I mean, honestly, you know, if we're making sure that students of color are feeling, um, safe and, and not in a, a problematic place, having a, uh, an officer who's, who's carrying a firearm, you know, in, in the school buildings, you know, not the, not the greatest fit, uh, there. So, I, I wanna, um, emphasize that I think that this is, this is something that needs to be handled with care. I think that, um, you know, one of the things I, I, I'd actually like to, to know more about from this is like what the, because I, I hear, like, Dr. McDowell, I hear people saying, "We're here, we're hearing a lot of requests for assistance from administrators." I, you know, it, it makes me wonder, what is that? Well, you know, because I, I've heard that. I've heard we have requests for assistance from administrators, but, you know, it's not clear to me, like, what that is and why liaising with the police is the best way to resolve those problems. So, I, I, I understand that this is not a school resource officer, which I would be very strong, uh, you know, I, I would be up here saying, "Don't do that if, if you're doing anything like that." Um, I understand that this is not intended as that, but I, I do think that the board needs, and again, I, I've heard about this idea, so this is not entirely foreign to me. It's still not clear enough to me what this is doing, that an SRO, that's different from the SRO role. Um, yeah, and I, I also sympathize with the board members who spoke out about the, the timing of this. I, I don't think this, anything about this has been posted, like, with the, the docs. I, I couldn't find it on the, uh, website. So, I also don't know, and I, I think it might be a little bit irresponsible for the board to vote $64,000 without, you know, having heard public comment on what that, you know, especially with how the budget is, without having heard much public comment on, um, on the use of that. Uh, anyway, thank you all.
Hi, Lisa Steinhauer, Park Avenue. I am here as part of a group of parents advocating to change the, the entrance age policy. Uh, first, I want to thank the board for taking the time to review the petition submitted on March 26th that, uh, requested changes to policy 5112 on entrance age. It was encouraging to see, uh, the entrance age policy on the agenda for tonight with a revision. Um, however, while this is an encouraging step, the revision only addresses part of one of the three amendments requested, uh, and only provides an exceptions for, an, an exception for new families moving into Collingswood. Uh, this is a third school board meeting where parents who are current Collingswood residents with kids in the school system or about to enter the school system have gotten up to voice their concerns over the entrance age policy prioritizing age as the only criteria for grade level placement. The revision included in the entrance age policy up for the first policy reading tonight does not help or benefit any of the parents and families who have expressed their concerns so far. There are more parents here tonight with the same concerns, that the only consideration for grade placement is the child's birthday, rather than looking at the child as a whole and allowing the parent discretion in the decision of when the child is ready for kindergarten. These are parents that want to be a part of Collingswood School District and are excited to be part of the school community, but are immediately hitting barriers before their child even starts kindergarten. It is great that there's a new process outlined in the entrance age policy for parents to submit their concerns about grade readiness to the school, uh, but this is an incredibly burdensome process for both the parents and frankly, the school district. It is forcing parents to gather documentation from a variety of sources, coordinate and find time for their child to have a formal screening, and then make time to meet with the school, to get the school's final determination. I am one of the families who is going through the new process to delay kindergarten for my child, and while I commend the school staff who are making every effort to hear my concerns about kindergarten readiness, I am, I am spending an incredible amount of time and effort on this process, and at this point, I have no idea whether that effort will result in a positive outcome for my child. The child who I know best, who comes home to me and confides in me what is great and tough about his school day. My child, who as a parent, it is my job to ensure he has the best opportunities to thrive. As I asked the, the board at the last meeting, if a parent knows that their child will benefit and thrive if kindergarten is delayed, then why is the school board making it so difficult for the parent to make that decision? I hope tonight the board will be more transparent and provide information about the reasoning behind the updates and revisions to policy 5112. Um, and I am again strongly urging the board to reconsider fully adopting the amendments in the submitted petition. The amendments are, add an exception for children with birthday, with birthdays July 1st to October 1st to allow parent choice without justification for grade level placement into kindergarten or first grade. Add an exception for students starting their schooling, including preschool, in another state, school district, or private school to continue to the next available grade level without disruption of missing or skipping a grade level. And thank you for addressing the, the, um, a piece of that amendment. Uh, and then removing all language discouraging education outside of Collingswood School District. Thank you again for your time.
Hi, my name is Katie Keener, and I live on Park Avenue. Um, I spoke at the last board meeting concerning my son Logan. He is in his second year of the Collingswood preschool program. He will not turn five until the middle of July, which is less than two months before the new school year will begin. Logan is proud big brother to our sweet Roman. Roman almost died at birth and is still a miracle that he is with us. The road ahead for my family is not going to be an easy one, especially for Logan. A study in Canada found that there's strong evidence that siblings of children who have a developmental disability experience higher odds of depression and other mental health diagnoses. A 2011 census report found that there were 2.8 million children with a disability in the United States, with a significant portion of these children having at least one sibling. In 2019, that number rose to over 3 million children in our country. My boys are not alone, they aren't the first, and they will not be the last in this position. When Roman is three, my husband and I will meet with a team of educational professionals to combine our deep understanding of our son's abilities and limitations with their professional backgrounds to agree upon a plan that provides him with a safe and fair education in the least restrictive environment for him. This should be the right of every parent and every child, including our son Logan. We are not asking the school district to take on any additional cost or to allow our son to have another year in this preschool program. We simply want to exercise our right to give our son the best educational experience possible at our own expense, without arbitrary repercussions being imposed upon him. We want to give our son the gift of time, especially since we don't yet know what the impact from his own premature birth, sensory processing struggles, young age, and the burden of being the sibling of a child with special needs. As a parent, it is our job and our right to advocate for our son, and that is what we are doing. This year, my son was repeatedly attacked by another student in his class. The school tried many different interventions to correct the situation, but it came to a point where my husband and I had to reach out to our superintendent. Dr. McDowell spoke with us on a professional level as an administrator, but also as a parent. We really appreciated his ability to relate to us not only as the administrator, but more importantly, on a human level. With that same humanity in mind, if this was your child or loved one, wouldn't you want them to be more than just their birth date? Wouldn't you want them to be educated as a whole person and not just that number on the paper? I beg you to consider revising this rule to include current residents. We are only trying to do what's best for our children. Please help us, please support us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Helwig. I live at 115 East Browning Road in Collingswood. I'm here to speak also to the petition to change policy 5112 on entrance age. As a former kindergarten teacher, I have personal experience of the impact of a child starting school too early. Often, they're not meeting expectations because those expectations aren't developmentally appropriate for them. They have trouble paying attention or staying on task, which impacts their behavior. This is just one of the many reasons I think parents should have the choice of when to start their kid because, in school, because they know. They know if their kids are ready. Aside from my personal teaching experience, that the youngest kids often struggle in kindergarten, there's also been research supporting this. A study at Stanford's Graduate School of Education showed that children who started kindergarten a year later showed significantly lower levels of inattention and hyperactivity, which are jointly considered a key indicator of self-regulation. The beneficial result was found to persist even at age 11, just for starting school a little later. Yet, the policy in Collingswood as it stands wants my child to start school at age four, merely because his birthday is nine days before the cutoff. Knowing everything we know, my husband and I decided, before our son was born, when we knew his due date, that he would not start kindergarten at four, that we would wait. However, we're not going to be given that choice. We knew it would be immensely beneficial to him from our experiences, even as my husband, as a summer birthday, with teachers as parents, holding him back, and he knew that it benefited him as well. Every teacher I've spoken to, friends in other districts around the district, has agreed with me that parents deserve the choice of when to enroll their child, especially when their birthday falls so close to the end of the enrollment period. And after all, our educators are the ones in the classrooms every day with these kids. They are the experts. We should be listening to them as well as to the parents. Parents know their child best. I did not enroll my son in preschool for this coming year, though he is eligible, because I know he is not ready. He has been receiving early intervention services for the last year, and while he's made a lot of progress, I'm unsure of why I should be pushing him into an environment he's not ready for, simply because policy states that this year and the following one are the only years he'll be eligible for it. And I won't push him into kindergarten either. I love this town, I love its teachers, I love everything about this place. I want my son to attend the schools, as my daughter currently does, but if this does not change, we'll be forced to look elsewhere, which is just disappointing. So, again, I am here in support of the petition to change policy 5112, with all three of the amendments fully adopted. And I urge the board to take action, as this policy is really negatively impacting my family and many others in the district, including impacting teachers, who will take on the challenges of classes filled with kids who just need a little more time to grow and mature before beginning school. Kids who their parents knew needed that extra time. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Michelle Bennis Kimball, and I live on 415 Virginia Avenue. I'm here to talk about the same policy. I don't have a child, uh, that will be entering kindergarten to have the age be an issue for me personally, but my son was born premature. He was born 29 weeks, and if his birth date just happened to be later in the year, this would be a very real concern. But I wanted to share our personal experience, because I can tell you that time is very precious. It's, can make a huge difference in the maturity. I see it every single year with my son. He is in second grade at Mark Newby, doing well, but every fall, he is very, less mature, and in the spring, I can see a whole new kid. He is much more responsible, much more ready to do things that they were expected to do at the beginning of the year. As a parent of a newborn, um, that was in the NICU for 66 days, that, you know, the fact that my son is doing well has no issues, but those days and every day afterwards and all of the follow-up we had to do to ensure that he was meeting all the milestones, I can't imagine being a parent today that would have to do all that work and still force them into school, that they know that they aren't going to be able to meet expectations. For no, nothing that they could possibly do is development, it's time, and parents know. And they deserve to make the choice. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dan Hennessy, 1033 Park Avenue. I'm also here in support of the, uh, the previous parents. My son's birthday is late September, and due to his late birthday, he has not, uh, been afforded the same opportunities as his peers that are placed in the grade with him. This spring is his first opportunity to play T-ball, and he is playing with the kids that he fits with. Uh, it's not the kids that he would be placed in the kindergarten with, because the cutoff is September 1st, not September, October 1st. Um, this, uh, this summer, he'll be unable to participate on the swim team, because he's not five years old yet. Uh, and the rest of the kids in his class, the majority of them, would be able to participate in this, on the swim team, but he's not able to do that. Uh, he's participating in a running series that had their first race yesterday. We were, he was happy to see a classmate at the race yesterday, to only find out that he was not running in the same race as him, because that student is five, who will be going to kindergarten next year. My son is four, expected to go to kindergarten next year. My son is four, expected to go to kindergarten next year. These don't, however, the school board, this school board is expecting him to keep up with those kids that are older than him academically all the way through, even though the recreation programs understand the age has, makes a difference. I encourage the board to adopt the full amendments that were supported, not just a portion of them, to help all of these families that are struggling with this issue. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Grunlock. I live at 901 Collings. I'm also here to speak on behalf of amending the policy. I'm here to speak as a parent and a professional. I have a young son whose birthday is five days shy of the cutoff. I've also worked in special education for 15 years. I taught in Pennsylvania special education, I taught special education in New Jersey. For the past 10 years, I've been a learning consultant on a, on a local child study team. I know firsthand how we are identifying students who have early birthdays and classifying them as learning disabled or other disabilities that keeps a stigma on them and limits their access to education. My own son is thriving the preschool program. He's learned a lot of great academic skills. He's writing his name at three years old, he's excited about letters and numbers, but does not take, paint the full picture of who he is. While he is involved in a variety of activities, and he was in daycare, he's just not where we would like him to be for his social, emotional learning. And we sit here, I'm a case manager of high school students, and we stress the importance of social, emotional learning, and we wonder why our students don't have the coping skills we want them to have. And we're trying to put in all of these strategies and interventions for them, and I just look at my own son at three, and I think to myself, let's get it now. Let's give him these social, emotional skills while he's a little boy, so that we're not sitting here together when he's in high school wondering, what went wrong? Why did he not develop those social skills we had hoped for him? My plan is for him to go to pre-K elsewhere, and my goal is for him to re-enroll in kindergarten here, because I believe in public education, I believe in this town, in this community, and what you all have to offer as educators in Collingswood. I want him to be a part of that. So I'm really hoping that you amend this policy, all three levels of the amendment, so that parents can choose to hold their kids back for kindergarten. My son will be four, and it's daunting to think of a little four-year-old in kindergarten with peers who are so much older than him. He's a sweet little boy who still just wants an adult to love and comfort him, and again, I'm so happy with the gains he has made, but I recognize what is best for him, and what is best for him is to delay kindergarten. I really hope you consider the voices of parents, a perspective of professional, and come back to really amend that policy to hear from us. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Tim Farrow, 911 Park Avenue. So, last month at the meeting, I made a pretty dramatic statement about the, the high school being on fire, and I thought about it afterwards, and said, perhaps, we need to bring down the tone a little bit, bring down the temperature. I've talked to some other people out there, and I said, you know what? You're right. We do. We need to start being productive in finding solutions for the problems that we obviously have and desperately need to fix. So we had one of those potential solutions raised this evening, and as part of the analogy, we had a bucket of water that was presented for some of the fire to try to put it out a little bit. And I understand that that might not be the perfect bottle of water, or bucket of water that we've measured to know, is it the ideal bucket of water to put out the fire? But we had that presented tonight as an opportunity to, to start that process, and collaborate later and figure out how to fine-tune that. But now I find myself going back to the analogy and saying, yeah, there, there is a bit of a fire. We need some water. We have four resignations on the agenda tonight from the high school, and I don't know the exact reasons for them, so I'm not going to speculate and say I know the reasons for it, but I know in this small high school, I'm very concerned about that. And after everything I heard at the last meeting and the meeting before and the meeting before, I am extremely concerned, not just very. And what I'd like you to do is think about these decisions like you have four children, like I do, one in the school deciding whether the time should continue at the school, another coming in within a year, and wanting my children to be in this school, which I really want this town to be proud of desperately. I want you to think about the decisions in that context, and say, what can we do so that going forward, one of them has a basketball team to play on? Because three of them are already gone for next year, that started on the team he's playing on. So, again, that's not hyperbole, that's the reality of decisions that a lot of parents are making right now. So yeah, they want to know that there are solutions on the table, not being tabled and taking off the table. We need leadership at the district, I talked about that at the last meeting, we still need that. We need that at the highest level. I'm asking the board again to continue to evaluate that and make a decision as the next year goes forward, and let us know when you're going to make that decision. And I'm asking the board to work together and walk and chew gum at the same time. What I mean by that is walk around the community and be thinking about this like a lot of us are all the time. Talk to people. I'm on the phone, I'm having meetings, I'm having coffee. I'm not on the board, but I'm doing it because I want to see this work out for the district. So, when you're talking about something since January, perhaps we can continue the conversation outside of these meetings, so that when we get here to the meeting, we're ready to make a decision on something that's difficult, and I understand it takes a lot of time, and I understand you are putting tons of time in, I respect that. But, at this moment in particular, it's something that needs to be done on a constant basis so that we can make these decisions and find some solutions. Thank you.
Hi, Daniella Solana Ward, I live on West Franklin. Neither Lisa Stanheyer or myself, the original submitters, have heard any feedback on our entrance age proposal amendment. I find it profoundly disrespectful that this board has chosen to set aside the majority of our research-backed proposals without so much as a further conversation. This is now my third time speaking to this body, and I keep coming back because unfortunately, these moments for public comment are the only way to responsibly represent the almost 100 families who are as worried about this entrance age policy as I am. I am here to support the children whose parents work late, maybe don't feel confident or educated enough to take on the board's policy, or perhaps don't even speak enough English to be able to communicate their concerns. I will not let my daughter skip kindergarten, start first grade wholly unprepared, and that's a privilege because I have the time and resources to advocate on her behalf. By fully adopting the three amendments we have already submitted, this is a privilege we hope to share equitably with all future Collingswood families. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Jean Garvey, I live at 115 Washington Ave. First, I'd just like to thank you for your service, serving on this board, it's a really important job. I do have a very serious concern about the high number of teacher and support staff resignations. We have four in the high school as along, as well as two additional ones, and I'm also looking at the past two school years as well when I'm talking about this. Many of these teachers have been with Collingswood for years and are willing to give up tenure and even just start all over in another district. And I know that this is a decision that they did not take lightly, and I think it reflects on the state of the relationship between the staff, the administration, and the board. It also has really serious consequences on the quality of education that our students receive, and I'm seeing that firsthand with my daughter and her teachers at the high school right now. I do think that it's time for the board and the administration to make some serious efforts to possibly start trying to hear what is happening, what their concerns are. So, I'm wondering if you are conducting exit interviews with the staff that are resigning? If you aren't, I highly recommend that you please start, and you listen to them, you listen to what they have to say, you reflect on it, and you try to move forward from there. Because that's really what I want, is I want to see teachers who want to be here and stay here, and I want them to feel supported by the people that they're working with. And so, you know, those people have resigned, and there's not much we can do about that now, but we can change our attitude, we can try to listen, and we can try to be constructive and move forward. I just, I think it's really important to the experience that our students will receive here at the school, and I really believe in public education. I am a public educator myself, and it's just very, I'm just very, very concerned right now with what the state of the situation seems to be. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Smith, 506 Woodlawn Ave. I am here in support of the petition to change policy 5112 on the entrance age. As currently written, the entrance age policy removes parent and family choice to make the best decision for their child. My child is currently attending kindergarten in Collingswood, and her birthday is at the end of July. I wanted to hold her back from entering kindergarten this year for social and emotional concerns in her maturity when compared to her peers, based on interactions that both me and her pre-K teachers had observed in her. My child is bright, and both me and her pre-K teachers' concerns did not have anything to do with her academic ability. Her pre-K teachers and I witnessed firsthand the social and emotional benefit to my child's development as a young student when she is one of the older students in her class during the summer between pre-K and kindergarten. Because during that summer, since we had still at that time intended to hold her back from entering kindergarten, we kept her enrolled in her pre-K program while her peers graduated. That summer, her confidence flourished, and for the first time, she came out of her shell with her peers, and started to be described as a leader in her classroom. It was a milestone that we cheered in a child who had historically struggled in classroom settings with her peers. When we learned that holding her back would not be possible, even after multiple phone calls with the district office, we finally enrolled her in kindergarten. Within the first week of kindergarten, it was more than clear this was not the right decision for my child. Even with all of the support of the wonderful teachers and staff at her school, she has struggled socially and emotionally, and has confided in me her struggles, describing it as feeling all of her feelings at the same time when interacting with her peers in class. She is currently seeing the school counselor on a weekly basis, and her teacher has recommended her to be evaluated by the OT specialist for issues we had previously addressed and overcome with her when she was three and four with outpatient OT services. Had she been allowed an opportunity to wait a year, she would have had an extra year to grow emotionally and socially, and the school could be using those same resources of the school counselor and OT services on other deserving students rather than on my child, whose issues could have been easily avoided. In light of the current budget situation, this policy will and does result in the need for more expenses and resources to be expended and exhausted on students for reasons that can easily be avoided if this policy is amended, as can be demonstrated by the number of resources being utilized by my child today. Countless students can be helped in the future by allowing parents who know their child best to make the best decisions for them, simply by trusting them in their choice of whether or not their child is ready to enter a specific grade. In support of the petition I signed, I am urging the board to change policy 5112 with the amendments of adding an exception for children with birthdays from July 1st to October 1st, and an exception for students who started their schooling in another state, school district, or private school, which I know for, that has been partially accepted, and also removing all language discouraging educations outside Collingswood School District. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cara Boiler. I live at 9 East Summerfield Avenue in Collingswood, New Jersey. I'm here based on what Mr. Farrow spoke of and one of our previous commenters about teacher resignations. I want to say first to the board and the administration that I don't stand here intending to criticize per se, but I do feel deep frustration and thus a desire to express my perspective in public comment tonight. I was sat in to open the Board of Education meeting minutes last night to discover the loss of six more staff within the district. We are losing a second teacher in our high school art department due to resignation this year, and this is after the painful loss of another magnificent art teacher last year. We are losing a cherished high school English teacher, and we should all regret this loss. We are losing a high school science teacher who puts her heart into hosting community events, going above and beyond her duty as a staff member, and we are losing a language teacher. I have also been informed that teachers, that the teachers' union confirmed there will be no replacement for the staff vacancy in CMS and the music department, high school music department left by the sudden loss of Mr. Lurch. We are witnessing the exodus of staff from the high school, and there's either an unwillingness or an inability to replace the people that we need to keep our high school community thriving and engaging for our students. Meanwhile, we have excessive, by appearance, administration, and we seem to be able to spend money on consulting firms for visions that I feel may never be attainable, given the current course of events. What's going to be left? We will have remaining staff shouldering the strain of the loss in every department that is not compulsory, a compulsory educational requirement. In some cases, we may even see staff shouldering the strain in compulsory classes, and if that becomes the case, then why would a staff member stay? Normally, they would stay because they love their school community, but also because they are supported and they are valued. When that sense of value and support is lost, then there is a love loss for the community that they work. When the demand for good teachers is so high across the country, and there are plenty of opportunities in other neighboring districts, then it is no wonder that our teachers will start to consider other opportunities that become available. There is no reason to stay in an unsupportive and fraught environment, even if you regret leaving the community that you used to love before the burden and stress became too great to bear. When colleagues start leaving, the work family is no longer what it used to be. Teachers will look for a new family of colleagues in an environment where support and values still exist. There will be no staff who will want to run clubs, participate in community events, or go the extra mile for their district and for their students. There will be nothing left to be passionate about. So then, why would families choose to stay in the district where programs, passion, and creativity are being peeled away? Simply put, I don't think they will. As their children age up, the parents with the means will move. Parents with the means to send their children to private school will send their children to private school. In some cases, like my own, parents will look to school choice, homeschool, or technical school, if that's what makes sense for their children. For my younger children, it may mean any of the above. The loss of our students at the secondary level will cause the district, the district budget to further plummet and create a cycle of staff loss and further student loss, until there is no longer an appeal to attend Collingswood High School as a student or to be employed by the district as a staff member. I can't wrap my head around how this all got so bad. I hope that young families moving into town are paying attention and speak up to preserve the good things we've had at Collingswood High School. I also hope that there is still something salvageable from all of this. When I spoke last month, I spoke of the appeal of Collingswood as a creative and a diverse community. It's why so many of us move here. However, this will no longer be reflected in Collingswood High School. Our arts and languages are struggling. What's going to be next? Students must attend school for math, sciences, English, and history, but when you take away the things beyond that, things which are truly appealing and that give students a sense of belonging, then you no longer have a school that children will want to attend. We love Collingswood, we good? 30 seconds. We love Collingswood schools, and we want to continue all the programs beyond just courses that are being offered. Teachers that want to show up, and teachers that want to do things beyond what exists, and we have that now, but we're losing it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maggie Zmiewski, I live at 258 Woodlawn Avenue. I am sitting here for over an hour, listening to the board go back and forth about hiring an SLO or whatever we want to call it. The teachers, the administrators on all the campuses have asked for this, and it's so confusing how we're not giving them what they're asking for, what they need. They've asked for this service for They've asked for this service for, I would assume, a couple of years now, and we're sitting here on a small group fighting over what a few people don't want, but what our staff wants and needs. And they're asking and they're coming, and it's, it's just confusing as a community member to see why are we not supporting our teachers? I went to school here. Our teachers come here, they stay here. Two of these three gentlemen over here have taught me, um, so they, they don't want to leave. They come to Collingswood, um, because it's a wonderful community and 12:01 last night, I opened up the agenda and saw all four resignations for the high school and just, I'm in awe of what, what we're not, how we're not supporting our teachers. And I don't know what the right solution is, but when they come and they ask for something, we should do everything in our power to give them and support them, um, for what they're asking for. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to section eight, the superintendent's report. Dr. McDowell.
So first and foremost, I want to thank everybody for, for being here. I know that it's a late night. I want to change the tone a bit. I asked, um, our music department to give me the words, to convey the words. They were, um, overwhelmed and not wanting to be in this space emotionally, and so I shared with them, would love for them to come. If they didn't feel that they could come and be in person, I would convey their sentiments for them. And so, uh, over spring break, um, our Collingswood school community lost a beloved band director. Mr. Joseph Lurch's passing has left a tremendous hole in our music department. He had been teaching for 30 years and the bulk of them, the last 20 have been at Collingswood High School. In that time, Mr. Lurch took a fledgling marching band program and turned it into a thriving community that has won nine state titles and championships over the years. He was a great colleague and friend. So many times over the years, he came to play at our concerts pro bono just for the love of music and for the love of students. Our strong music program at Collingswood has earned our school district the best communities for music education designation seven years in a row, including this year. This honor is in no small part thanks to Mr. Lurch and his dedication to music and our students. He was first and foremost a band director, but he also, he was equally as amazing a musician, playing in various pickup bands around South Jersey as a percussionist, a bass player, and a guitarist. Mr. Lurch always said, "Those who stay will be champions," a testament to how strongly he believed in his program and his students. His pride for his bands, along with his high levels of musicianship, he was able to achieve them. And this is something that we as a department will strive to continue in his absence, knowing that he is with us in spirit. And so, I wanted to make sure that, uh, in the midst of everything that we have discussed and will continue to discuss, um, we don't lose sight of the tremendous impact that Mr. Lurch had and will have for generations to come. On February, April 16th, our high school presented its first annual online Broadway night. Some of the best student performers gathered to sing, dance, and act for our school community, including performances from Heathers, Hatties Town, A Chorus Line, The Last Five Years, and, and much more. This entirely student-run showcase, uh, lasted over 30 minutes, and we're thankful to our student director, Amalia Messick, and our hosts, Bastian Pizzutilo and Ben Savarino-Dupras. We'd also like to thank our dedicated and committed high school theater department for supporting our students. As we think about, um, our wellness center, our wellness center, um, is working in concert with staff and students in order to finish the year strong. In terms of mental health and well-being, this has been an extremely challenging year. The center is up and running and student services are now being provided. Our wellness center staff are also working with their dedicated faculty to provide additional resources and support in the areas of social and emotional learning. The focus, uh, this month is really around relationship building and developing common language on campus. On April 5th, our Collingswood High School senior leaders hosted Shadow Day for 46 incoming Woodland students. Our students led discussions on leadership. They introduced them to school activities and the importance of making good choices. We would like to especially thank Ms. Hart and Mr. McLean for supporting our student leaders as they welcome and embrace, uh, the next generation of leaders here at Collingswood High School. On April 21st, Collingswood students participated in an equity summit. This was made up of eight schools, um, within our region and 10 students per school. The mission of the Equity Leadership Summit was to discuss implicit bias and to allow students to establish relationships with students from neighboring towns, to also understand and embrace differences, to promote acceptance among each other and within their respective school communities. Students heard from a keynote speaker who addressed topics about diversity and inclusion, not just tolerance, but towards all people. He took questions from the audience and many of our students participated. There were breakout sessions where students from all schools came together to share their thoughts on diversity, microaggressions, prejudice, and school culture. Faculty advisors met to share their ideas as well and discuss how each school works and how they can support students in these areas. And the day ended with each school coming up with and debriefing on what they wanted for their school, and I wanted to share what our students were able to come up with. Our students, uh, presented in the action plan that they want more inclusion. They specifically referenced that advanced placement students stay all day with advanced placement students and don't have the opportunities to meaningfully engage with other students on campus. They also talked about it's hard to get involved with clubs because many of the relationships are pre-established and that formal opportunities for students to be able to engage with one another is preferable. They also talked about talking with middle schoolers and underclassmen in order to teach them. They discussed or presented helping others deal with microaggressions because they can sometimes be uncomfortable. They also want students to have the opportunity to help educate teachers through student presentations, as well as having better promotion and communication for school events so that they get greater levels of participation. They also want the opportunity for students to meet new people and decrease the cliques that are on campus, and they want more effective utilization of Google Classroom in keeping students, uh, current on all of the updates that are coming out. Students also expressed the need to have an equity summit, um, during the school day that is student-led. In addition to incorporating a freshman hangout day, as well as making sure that additional supports are put in place for our, um, non-English speaking students. The overall takeaway, um, was that students enjoyed it, uh, and we're glad that they had the opportunity to participate and look forward to next year's event, and we want to thank, uh, Mr. Eric Fieldman for supporting our students in that effort. We'd like to make an announcement that tomorrow night is Culture Fest here, um, in the cafeteria. And so, as we continue to embrace diversity as a strength within our community, please come out to hear, taste, and experience other cultures. Special thanks to Ms. Domeniac for helping to organize volunteers and promote this, uh, special event. The event begins tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. On Thursday, we will be celebrating World Language National Honor Society inductions. So in order for students to be inducted into the World Language National Honor Society, they have to complete a minimum of three years of study in their chosen world language, as well as maintain a 3.0 GPA or higher. They also acquire national membership into their respective language honor society. For Spanish, there's an additional requirement where students have to, uh, volunteer to tutor for a minimum of one hour per month. It is also, um, important to note that Collingswood High School, uh, for the first time, will have 11 graduates achieve the New Jersey Seal of Biliteracy this year. Special thanks to our district supervisor, Dave Oliveris, for supporting the department, and Senora Endino for organizing and promoting this event on Thursday, April 27th, also here in the cafeteria beginning at 7 o'clock. We wanted to give a quick update on the action items, uh, that we presented during last month's board meeting around diversity, equity, and inclusion. On April 5th, we launched the DEI Executive Committee, where discussions and planning are underway around a Juneteenth Unity Day for Saturday, June 17th, with details to follow. This is a partnership between, um, our community groups, the school district, and the borough of Collingswood, and we're looking forward, uh, to, to an exciting event. The Executive Committee is also, uh, in the process of receiving disciplinary data in order to be able to provide feedback as it relates with our code of conduct revisions and changes that are needed, as well as looking at academic data, specifically looking at enrollment of students in advanced courses and how can we create a more inclusive, uh, environment. Uh, on April 20th, we had 24 faculty and staff participate in restorative justice training. Part one of the training is really focused on community building, and part two, which will be scheduled in September, is a response to harm. And so, this first, uh, two cohorts of faculty and staff, um, are, are first step into helping to usher in, um, new conversations and, and change on campus. Uh, on April 24th, today, um, we signed a memorandum of understanding with Rowan University for their Men of Color Hope Achievers Program. MOKA, uh, will leverage existing initiatives launched by Rowan College's Department of Education and the New Jersey, um, excuse me, Rowan's College of Education and the New Jersey Department of Education with a focus on recruiting and developing, uh, teachers of color and helping to, uh, create, uh, opportunities for, um, uh, students to have positive academic outcomes by having, uh, a more diverse range of educator in their, in their schools. Uh, on April 28th, we will have two cohorts of affinity groups of students that are part two of helping to begin to change the discussions on campus. And so, 40 students will be the first cohort that will begin engaging in restorative circles starting this week, and then weekly for the remainder of the school year, and they will be integral in helping to lead, um, this growth and this development starting in September. On May 6th, um, DEI training and leadership alignment starts, uh, in a full-day retreat with the Board of Education and the district leadership team. And then on May 24th, um, we currently have identified several policies that ultimately affect the DEI work, uh, and we're seeking to, uh, present some of those, uh, updated policies for a first read at the May 24th board meeting. We are also pleased, uh, to announce that the district has received a local recreational improvement grant to the tune of $50,000. The grant funds will be used to resurface and restore the basketball courts on this campus. It will also include the addition of a pickleball court. Uh, special thanks to Ms. Hart, Mr. Pence, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Mrs. Coleman, and our Director of Facilities, Mr. Higginbotham, as they supported, uh, Dr. Karen Principato, our supervisor in charge of, of grants. Uh, and that concludes, I'm, I'm sorry, that does not conclude my report. Uh, section 8.01 is the enrollment report, um, that is attached. Uh, 8.02 is the, um, school safety drill report for March of 2023, and then 8.03 is the, uh, suspension report. 8.04 is also the anti-bullying report, and all of those are, are attached. And that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to section 10, the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report.
All righty, I'll try to be quick. Item 10.01 is a listing of your March, um, monthly budget transfers. Excuse me. Item 10.02 is your Board Secretary and Treasurer School Fund reports, um, for the month of March. 10.03 is a listing of student activities reports for the month of March. 10.04 is your food service financial statement for the month of March. 10.05 is the listing of the purchase orders that have been issued on your behalf, and then 10.06 is the listing of the warrants to be paid, um, upon approval this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to section 11, the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Mr. Craig.
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement, capital improvement projects district-wide. Uh, we are seeking approval of the following items. 11-2 to 11-9 is the Board Secretary's report as presented. Uh, 11-10 is the school safety partnership agreement as discussed in the committee of the whole earlier. Uh, 11-11 is renewal of continuing with Financial Advisory Service Agreement. Uh, 11-12 is approval of a, um, medical doctor, uh, for a second opinion around an FMLA claim staff. Uh, 11-13, uh, results of an earlier plumbing bid. Just note that what came back was not been awarded, uh, due to being out of, um, our budget, out of budget limitations. 11-14, renewal agreement with Educational Data Services that provides cooperative bids for school supplies and keeps prices down for us on, um, critical, uh, supplies and, um, needs of the district. 11-15, uh, DNT translation services, uh, approval of them on an as-needed basis. Uh, 11-16, um, through the, uh, this is a risk management agreement, um, through the Joint Insurance Fund, JIF, um, approval of disagreement. And 11-17 is, uh, Camden County Education Services Agreements, continuing, uh, our partnership with them, uh, who do everything from providing special education transportation to CST evaluations as needed, as long with other services. So, you know, Beth Ann, just, you know, if we are tabling 11-10, do I just still seek approval or do I?
Are we tabling or are we taking it?
I don't think, I don't think we need to.
I don't think you guys.
I don't think we need to table it.
Okay. So, seeking approval for items 11-2 to 11-17.
Motion, please. I got you.
Motion to approve those items.
I second the motion.
Do we have a first motion?
No.
Kelly was first. Kelly's, Kelly's the first. Do we have a second? Thanks. Questions, questions or comments from board members?
I, I'm sorry, are we, are we now voting on shared services or not?
We're going to vote on the shared service agreement.
Yes, it is.
As, as it is. You can make a motion to table.
I make motion to table.
It's on. Oh.
All right. I make a motion to table item 11.10.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
All right, give me a second. Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
No.
Ms. Henry? Mrs. Maya?
No.
Mrs. McColsky?
No.
Mrs. Savarino? Mrs. Seltzer? Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
No.
Mr. Dulcous? Mrs. Kaden?
No.
Motion doesn't carry.
Okay, so do we need to redo the motion to approve all items? No.
No, we're good.
Okay. So, questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
When you know my pen just went. Can't make this up, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Mr. Chu?
Yes, except item 11-10 where I vote no.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes, except on 11-10 where I vote no.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McColsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Savarino?
Yes, except for 11-10 where I vote no.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes, except for 11-10 where I vote no.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes, except for 11-10 where I vote no.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes.
Moving on to section 12, Curriculum Committee. Mr. Chu?
All right. Uh, the Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, and co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. Uh, we have field trips for, uh, all three levels, uh, up for approval today, so there's some elementary school field trips, um, to Museum of American Revolution, Sierra Run Wildlife Refuge, uh, oh, I think to participate in Track and Field Day as well, um, Franklin Institute, and the Skosh Wright, uh, for the, uh, fifth grade, uh, promotion exercises. There's also a, uh, middle school, so then, uh, let's see. Give me a second here. Item 12.03 is a middle school.
Item 12.03 is middle school field trips, and that's to Springdale Farm. And then 12.04 is the high school field trips. And the, I think, one led by Mr. Fieldman, and then, I think, a couple more involving choir, and I guess, oh, the Student Emmy Award Ceremony at Temple University. 12.05 is home instruction out of district placement. 12.06 is another set of home instruction out of district placements. 12.07 is an out-of-district placement. And then 12.08 are some non-resident students up for approval, and this is the, I think the, is this, this, oh.
It's just for them to finish this school year.
Got you, finish them this school year, yep. And then 12.09 is a support service request, and I believe that's it. So, we would be seeking approval for items 12.02 through 12.09.
Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
She has to leave.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk or abstained.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes, except where I'm required to abstain.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 13, the Personnel Committee, Ms. Sheridan, Celia.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Today, items 13.02 through 13.07, we have resignations. 13.08 is the appointment of a long-term substitute. 13.09, appointment of a Buildings and Grounds custodian, another permanent building substitute at 13.10. Items 13.11, I'm sorry, item 13.11 is high school non-athletic extra-duty pay stipends. 13.12, athletic event personnel. 13.13, the appointment of Rowan University interns and a practical affiliation with the university. 13.14, student-teacher practical placement. Item 13.15, substitutes and tutors. 13.16 is a travel expense, but we have none this month, so right now I'm seeking approval of items 13.02 through 13.15.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
I have a comment.
Sorry.
I just want to acknowledge the resignations, and I want to say that I'm very, I also am very concerned about some of the things that were brought up tonight about, you know, just in terms of the strain on the staff that we have, that we have left, and I just want to make that public that, wait, this is something that we're talking about and we're all very concerned about.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk or abstained.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes, except where required to abstain.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 14, Policy and Miscellaneous. I will do this one for Mary. 14.01 is the approval of the HIB report for March 2023. For 14.02, Policies First Reading, she had written something up that she asked me to read. The Policy Committee carefully reviewed the petition and our entrance age policy, and were able to find compromise in the area of students entering our district from other districts or other states who become, or who because, excuse me, of varying start dates for kindergarten did not have the opportunity to attend kindergarten. In the area of a child's birthday, we felt that the current exception age request answers this ask. With regards to the ask of removing all language discouraging education outside Collingswood School District, the state has very strict guidelines regarding ages of students in our pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 classrooms, so we would not be able to honor anything that falls outside of these parameters. Finally, in our meeting, we went through the Entrance Age Exception Request Form, and will be asking that the form be accompanied by an FAQ document and the documents that are needed to fill out the form. And we would like to thank all of the community members for their feedback and continued advocacy on this policy. So with that being said, 14.02 is the approval of first readings of policies for bilingual and ESL educa-, these are revisions, bilingual and ESL education, the entrance age policy, the attendance policy, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, student enrollments, and student records. And then 14.03 are second readings of a revision to the policy about board officers, call adjournment and cancellation, notice of board meetings, emergency virtual or remote instruction programming, and administering an opioid antidote. And then there are, for 14.04, regulations that require just one reading for bomb threats, lockdown procedures, and active shooter drills. So with all of that, we are looking for approval of items 14.01 to 14.04 this evening. Is there a motion to approve said items? And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I have a comment about the age policy.
Sure.
So I just wondered if you could explain again, so the response to the parents' concerns about their children whose birthdays fall close to the cutoff date and things like You're saying that the state legislates the age, and that is why we cannot leave it up to parent choice? If that could just be made a little bit more clear, just so I understand.
So I think what she meant by that was for, for pre-K 3 and pre-K 4, for our grant, yes, it does mandate the age and the number of years that they're allowed to participate in the program for the public pre-K program. Beyond that, I was actually not in the Policy Committee discussion this time because we had an extra member, but I believe that the reasoning beyond that was that there, that the committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, members that were there, felt that the exception age request form was sufficient enough for those families that felt like if their student wasn't ready, that there was a process in place, because at the end of the day, somebody does always have to be the youngest student in the class, but that there's a procedure that they can follow that includes teacher recommendations and input from parents and various tests. So am I, I'm looking around at the people that I know that are at the meeting, is that about right? Is there anything that I didn't say that would be helpful to add?
I think we all agree, though, that the, that process could be a little more, a little more clearly laid out, so that when you go to the website for that process, there would be sort of a workthrough or an FAQ document there to, to help facilitate that and help make it seem a little bit less onerous than it may at first glance.
Okay, that sounds like a great idea, so.
And if I could clarify, did I also, because I was reading through, did I also understand that there is an exam that a student could possibly take as well if a, if a parent was concerned that they were not ready, like an exam where a teacher would participate?
Yes, I believe so. It's in the policy, what's in it, but yes.
I wasn't sure if that was just for out-of-state.
Oh, no, that's for anyone who's doing the exception age request.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except item, or, I'm sorry, policy number 5112, where I vote no.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaden?
That brings us to our final opportunity for public participation. I think everyone that is here now heard me read things the first time, but the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. We will be listening and taking notes, and if further clarification is needed, that will come at a later time. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a strict five-minute time limit per person during public comment. Mr. Craig will be giving you a 30-second heads-up, and please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Melissa Holtz. I live at 408 Taylor Avenue. I'm here tonight simply as a concerned mom, losing Mr. Lurch from the band program. It's devastating. It's devastating to his students, to the community, to his coworkers. And I am forever in the debt of the rest of the music program, the teachers that participate in the program, because they stepped up, and it's my understanding that they are going to cover all of his classes for the rest of the year, for the rest of the school year, so that they didn't have a long-term substitute coming in that they weren't familiar with. And walking into his classroom was hard enough, him not being there, but then to see an unfamiliar face, someone that didn't know them. I applaud the music teachers that did step up to do that. My concern is that I don't want to see those same teachers be penalized because they are making the time to do this, they are taking away time from other classes, free periods, et cetera, that they could be working on things for their classes, they're now taking over Mr. Lurch's classes. It's wonderful, I appreciate it, but I don't want to see them be penalized next year because they were able to do it for these few months out of the kindness of their heart. I don't want the board to think that it is an easy way to have his class covered and not have to replace him. My fear is that he won't be replaced next year, and obviously, no one can replace him. He, those are big shoes to fill. But I would hate to see the, the teachers of the music department be expected to handle Mr. Lurch's classes next year and to handle all the responsibilities for the marching band, the indoor band, the guard. I don't want to see that happen. They are doing this out of the kindness of their hearts, and because they love their students, and they want to do what's best for their students, they're advocating for them, and I think we should all be very grateful to them for that. I also want to see them get the support that they're going to need next year without Mr. Lurch here. That was my concern. I just wanted to be able to voice my opinion to someone this evening. Hopefully, you will all take that into consideration when hiring new staff, given all of the teachers that we're losing. I would hate to see the music department suffer as well as any of the other departments suffer. I don't want to see the teachers that are here now that are dedicated and working their tails off be expected to handle more than they can handle. I don't want to see them burn out, and I don't want to see us lose more valuable teachers. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Katie Cunningham, and I live at 108 Crestmont Terrace. I'm here to also talk about the policy, the 5112. I had heard it when you guys were talking about the policy and looking over things. I, too, last year struggled with this process, and I went through everything. And in my research, when I was looking last year, I didn't see state mandated policies on age requirements. It looked a lot like it was how the application is submitted, and some of how, I guess, the standards that I guess the district would like to see in those programs. As another one of the things of, you know, trying to deter people from going out of, out of Collingswood for services, I don't understand why, if someone decides to send them to a private school and not use the two years granted and funded by the government and our township, why then it would be a problem for them to go to kindergarten based on just that age requirement and only having two years in the pre-K. So I just didn't know if people overlooking the policy saw that policy that was mandated by the state, or if it's something that's in the application that prohibits someone getting an extra year if needed for whatever, whether it's social and emotional, or it's academic. I see a lot of emphasis on the social and emotional learning, and I don't know why we're taking that out from the beginning, and we're focusing when it's a crisis. So I just hope that that's looked at a little bit more for our kids as a whole. Thank you.
Reagan, would this be an appropriate place for me to make a comment about Mr. Lurch?
Okay. I wasn't sure where to put this in, but I'm, I was a band parent and a volunteer for years and got to know Mr. Lurch very well, and I just wanted to say what a huge loss it is, because Joe Lurch had the unique ability to create a sense of belonging for kids, and he even sought them out to make them part of the program. And anyone who was part of the marching band, whether you were staff or a parent volunteer or a student, you kind of felt this sense of family if you were part of the program. And I just wanted to leave everyone with the thought that making a positive, loving space for all kids is probably Joe Lurch's biggest legacy to Collingswood, so he will be missed.
I think that's the perfect way to end the meeting. Thank you for that. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So who?
And a second?
Second.